Still got everything going via Zoom. So we'll kick the study session off here at 7:36 PM for the 2024 bond top 10 questions and answers. And so what we'll do is Dean's going to kind of run through the presentation. I'm going to chime in here and there on each of the slides. And if we could hold off for questions from council until after, I guess unless there's something super, super pressing that makes sense, but then we can kind of summarize from there too. And then we'll go to public comment and also, Dean, whenever you are ready, feel free to take it away here and let me know when you need the slide changed.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And for the people that are at home possibly watching this. So what we did is we advertised and had people submit questions. We were able to get the synopsis of the 10 most frequently asked questions. We had to paraphrase a lot of them because, you know, just everybody has a different way of speaking or whatever. And then there were several questions that were submitted that weren't really related to the bond at all or whatever. But so I'll go through these and I'll give you what is out there and what has been published and what we have already talked about in a summary. And hopefully, if you have a question, especially if you're tuning in from home or something, write it down and we'll try to circle back to it and clear up anything that's there. By far, the number one question is, everybody wants no location. Where would the new fire and police buildings be located? So the general area for the fire building, as you'll see in the next slide, but we won't go to that quite yet, is near the Fort and West Road corridor. With time distance studies, the fire building, if we're going to go from two fire stations to one fire station, that location in general, not specifically, we're not tearing down Tim Hortons, we're not tearing down the gas station, it's just the general area. It could be several blocks in either direction. But that location will improve response to over 80% of the residents. So that is going to be important. Fire stations are very geographically based where they're located. The police station, it could be located with the fire station if we have a proper footprint to make the property work. But the police station can be located just about anywhere that we can acquire an appropriate footprint. Could it be built in place where the current station is? Yes. Could a different corner? Could a different area? Yes. We have a lot more flexibility and a lot more available opportunities with the police station location. One of the little misnomers is building a combination police and fire station is going to save us millions. That's actually not true. There are some savings that can be gathered, but when you need a bigger footprint to be able to put two sizable buildings, which would be 40,000 square foot of space, you're going to pay a premium above for that bigger plot of land. So any savings that you might get from a little bit less infrastructure, you can generally expect to cancel out the savings. So it's not overwhelming. That's just not what the building assessment and the experts that have put price tags on it. So that's why it was planned and budgeted for two buildings independently. It's the worst case scenario, but don't think that putting the buildings together necessarily is going to be a windfall of savings for the taxpayers. If you want to go to the next slide, sir? So this slide just gives you the general location, not specific. Again, I can't stress that enough because I can't believe how many questions we had about the location. But on the right, it gives you the proposed general location of where the fire station would be. And once again, the current stations, if you look, we have the one up off of King Road. It's on the border of Riverview. Not really well thought out when it was done. It was thought with different ideas out there and everything. And then the original station downtown is where originally the people lived. Everybody lived down in that area. That's where the original couple thousand people said we're going to set up shop and everybody had to be along the water and everything. But that was 97 years ago. But it gives you an idea on the coverage. Chief Anderson did a whole Eastern Michigan study on travel distance and station locations and all that stuff. So we're very comfortable where we got to be with it and what will work better for the city going forward.
To add to that as well, too, I just, I don't know how well the image is coming up for folks at home, but it is something that we have available on the website. As Dean mentioned, right, Chief Anderson did an entire thesis on station location, response time, things like that. But on the left side, where our current stations are set up with the benchmark of four minutes of being when, you know, our police officers, firefighters should be arriving at your house in the event of an emergency. If you essentially live west of the Franken Poet Drain or south of Van Horn, you are not in that four-minute response window right now. With a centralized station at the proposed general location, it does cover, again, all of that territory and certainly much more than the current four-minute response time around our city. So I think it's important, right, that this wasn't chosen at random or just because it might be the easiest or anything like that. It's certainly four response time and to improve that to as many folks in the city as we possibly can.
All right. Question number two. How long is the bond? How much will my taxes go up? And when will my taxes go up? And I think we pretty much answered that online and everything, but the bond is a 30-year bond as proposed. The average home is taxable value is $72,000 and change, but we based our numbers on $75,000 to stay a little pessimistic or optimistic, however you want to look at it. And that breaks down to an average increase of about $4 a week in taxes. And these changes would be effective with next summer's tax bill going forward. In the interim, just so everyone understands what has to happen, voters approve and then we're going to be ramping up already things that are set and ready to go so that we can acquire the appropriate property, get plans finalized for all of the things that we have to do. And then at sometime after that, there would be the issuance of the bonds. That's when the real timetable starts ticking where we got to go through and get this all together and all done within 36 months. So that's why it would all happen relatively quickly. So.
And then too, as Dean mentioned, the average taxable value of a home is a little over $72,000 in Trenton. And I want to reiterate too, that taxable value is not the same as a property value. I don't think that there's probably too many places you'd be able to get for $72,000 in Trenton. But that, you know, in the notice of assessments that went out a couple of months ago now, if folks want their individualized information, that number is included there. And so that kind of helps you do some of the math on it. So for the average Trenton home, it'd be a little over $4 a week or about $200 over the course of the entire year for this bond. And then if you, right, that's projected for roughly a $75,000 taxable value home, which should be right in the median for folks in Trenton here. But if you, right, can extrapolate that, if you have a taxable value of $150,000, $50,000, et cetera, that's just sort of the benchmark. So about for every $75,000 in taxable value, about $200 a year is what this would be equivalent to.
All right. Question number three. I know you're planning $29 million for the new police and fire station, but what else or where else are the funds being spent? So about $14 million of the total allocation of 435 would be spent on buildings such as the Westfield Building, Library, City Hall, DPW, and Kennedy Rec Center. The things that we would be able to address, they're outlined online in the building assessment. But in addition to that, we have lots of ADA compliance issues. We have lots of inefficiencies in addition to electrical and mechanical and roofs and parking lots and, I mean, just about everything you can imagine needs a substantial investment. But it basically works out to about a third of the money will be sprinkled or spread amongst the other facilities. The bulk of the money would go to a new police and fire station.
And as Dean mentioned too, that, you know, from these other buildings, these are absolutely massive capital investments that we have to make one way or the other. You know, we have, again, an almost 100-year-old building, nothing or very little is ADA compliant and that is something that is frankly inexcusable. And then the other infrastructure stuff, HVAC, roofs, plumbing, things like that, that foundational issues that are unbelievably expensive and not going to get any cheaper at all. This is, you know, this is our opportunity to do this while we're, you know, in one fell swoop, more or less.
All right. Question number four. What will happen to the old sites or locations? Well, in all likelihood, if this passes, Fire Station Two would be able to be sold and redeveloped. It's nothing that has to be demolished, not that it couldn't be or whatever, but and the old police and fire station, anything could happen to that. It could be sold and we could attempt to redevelop it if we've found the right purchaser. It could also be demolished in that location. It's a good location, right, at the corner of Maple and West Jefferson. Or the other thing could be, it could be taken down completely and we could build the new police station there. Wouldn't be enough of a footprint for a new police and fire station and it wouldn't meet the geographic needs of a fire station. So don't misinterpret that expectation. As far as, I was asked one other thing and it was resident wanted to know too, what happens from the proceeds with any property that we would? Well, the proceeds from the property would stay within that genre of building and everything else. But I just caution anybody that if you have the awareness of what goes on, what has been going around in commercial real estate, there isn't a very good, strong market for commercial real estate. We have plenty of properties and everything that are sitting there vacant, unused and everything else. Storefronts and everything like that are kind of going away or they're at least less common. And people don't have the money to reinvest, to renovate and put the capital into structures right now. I don't know if you had anything else to add there, Mayor?
Nope, nothing else on that one for me.
All right. Okay. Question number five. Have other or will other buildings that are now vacant be considered for possible renovation to house police and fire? And the answer is simply yes. Nothing is off the table. But like some of the buildings, I won't go into ones that have been mentioned and everything, you still get back to the geographic location and it doesn't fit the need. Can we put a 20,000 square foot structure on there that will put us in the right spot going forward? And people have to understand too, that, and you can see it in the study we did, that new construction costs versus renovation costs, hmm, you get into a tough spot. There might be in some cases where you can have a savings where you do a renovation if you can plug it all in. But if that building is already 30 or 40 years old and you dump six, eight, $10 million into a renovation, you're going to be in the same spot in 15 or 20 years where you're going to have to dump more money because so much of that building was already old. And a really good example for residents to think about, we have a neighboring community, Allen Park, that is proposing to do a renovation of their fire station. Their fire station is 50, 55-ish years old and they're proposing to put $8 million into a renovation that I believe is around 70% of the building. That's just not the direction that this council wanted to go. In our case, we would sink millions of dollars into a building that by the time we were done paying off the bond, it would be a 130-year-old building that still has millions of dollars of needs to it. I will tell you personally, I was a big fan of wanting to gut the police station and rebuild it, keep that classic look and everything else, but it's not cost-effective and it's not going to, it's not going to be that generational investment that people are going to be able to put aside and be able to not worry about for another 50 years like this proposal is. This proposal as presented doesn't cut any corners. It really has the budget and the plan to do it right, do it once. So.
Every option on the table.
Yeah. All right. Number six. Why not just repair the police and fire stations? Well, I kind of talked about that and everybody's collective goal and I really appreciate councils' unanimous support. But the goal was to make a generational investment. I'm not going to criticize previous administrations because, previous councils. There have been circumstances that have come up since 1993 with proposal A, the market crash in 2008 that, you know, reduced tax revenues by 40%. They're, you know, the closing the DTE plant, McClaus Steel closing, all these different things played into why previous administration and councils have always had to sacrifice other investments into the structures to make sure the residents were getting the best service. And I will tell you, I'm biased, but Trenton provides the best service down river, period. Best recreation department. There is no city around that has a recreation department like we have with the senior services. We do our trash internally. It's phenomenal. When everybody else is complaining about their trash, you know how many complaints I've had in the last three and a half years about trash? Zero. We brought our grass cutting in. We do it better and we actually do it cheaper than what we were doing with contractors. You know how many complaints I've had about grass cutting this year? Zero. You know, I mean, I can't stress it enough that it's not like this in other cities. We really, you have first-class advanced life support. You have, you call the police and they're there at your door. It's not, it's not that there's only two guys on the road or anything like that to officers or the guys, but we have adequate staffing. We keep this town clean and safe and it's just a decision of where the community wants to go to be able to maintain that. We're at a point though, there's no other monies around there that we can do projects of this size. We're behind and this is an opportunity for us to get caught up, if you will.
And to add to that as well, too, I mean, as Dean mentioned, that, you know, this would probably provide at least a 50-year lifespan for us here. That is, you know, what we've seen around most cities down river. We have far, far, far and away the oldest buildings of any other community down river. So we do pride ourselves on that services, that certain level of service that we provide to residents, but we need to make sure that we've got the infrastructure, the buildings, the places for those folks to work and the places for our residents to come into should be places that they're proud of. There are some stations, I know we pulled the list of all of them down river to figure out how old each one was. And there are some cities that are on their third or fourth fire stations, police stations, and the time we've been on the same one here. I think most importantly almost too is that, sure, you know, as we mentioned on repairs, that I'm sure we could trim a couple million dollars off the total of the bond by going with the renovation route. However, when those decisions get made, that's how we end up in situations where five, 10 years down the line, there's a different mayor and council here that are coming back asking the residents for more money to finish what wasn't taken care of. And I have no interest in that. This is a one bite at the apple situation where if we're going to fix it, we're going to do it right the first time and we're going to do it while, certainly while construction costs are where they're at now and not continuing to increase and adding on to the total there too. None of these things are going to get cheaper. They haven't in the timeframe since this was last attempted by the city. But it's just really, really important to focus that, right? This 30-year bond would provide a generational investment that would last far, far, far longer than what the actual term of the bond is to.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Question number seven. I just gave you a bunch of money, and this is a quote, actually, I didn't redact anything there. I just gave you a bunch of money for buildings and you raised my taxes. Well, we got to talk a little bit about, we're the collector of taxes, so we get the bad rap. The city collects about 40%, about 40% of the revenue that we collect is for city services. Then there's another portion that goes to Wayne County and then there's another portion that goes to the schools. So the tax increase, yes, there was a tax increase because the property's values went up, which that happens virtually every year. But the voters approved a school tax for buildings, actually, I don't remember the amount, I think it was over 50 million, in 2017. That was the building money. And then there was just another small approval, I shouldn't say small, but another change to the way, the way you're taxed with the schools coming up. It just was in this past May. But so I just want to make it real clear because a lot of people don't understand there's a separation here. We don't get a penny of the county and we don't get a penny of the schools. And in the last 10 years, save, except one year where we did assess one extra mil for one year, your tax rate has been, for the city, has been exactly the same. We have not, the councils in the nine years I've been here have been very fiscally responsible, very reserved, very living within their means and trying to uphold the high level of services. There have not been even a, I mean, anything, there hasn't been anything that was out of the ordinary as far as tax or changing the way the revenue comes in. I think that's all I got on that.
Yeah. And I think that that point too, that you mentioned, that over the 10 years that between being mayor and on council now that I've been here, well, that was tough to say, we have, right, there's only been one time, we had a one mil increase. That's the only increase from the city's portion in the last 10 years. And it was years prior to that too, that there weren't any at all. I know that, right, any increases in the mileage rate over the last five, six, seven years or so have come from the school bonds. That is not something that the city has assessed or collected any of the revenue for. That has all gone directly towards the school buildings for their bonding initiatives, but none of that has come to the city. So again, outside of that one year, one mil increase, any sort of, I hear folks all the time of, oh, you guys raised my taxes again. No, that's just property values going up. We as an entity have only done so one time for one mil in the last 10 years or so. And I think too, as you mentioned on the last slide, it was 25 years ago now that, right, was the last time that the city put forth a similar proposal actually, and it failed by 70 votes. And frankly, there was no initiatives or anything like that taken since then. And obviously, you know, it goes to show too, that the cost of the building portion, the land acquisition, any of the maintenance portions as well too, has gone up tremendously since then. So we have not asked for anything of this magnitude in a quarter of a century now.
All right. So that last slide showed the dividing of the taxes. When your tax bill comes in, this is how it's sliced up. And then the next slide gives you a breakdown of our annual budget of where money is allocated. And by and large, we don't have much control over, you know, we try, we try to do what we can with healthcare benefits and everything on that. But, you know, we have to give the employees pay raises, we have to provide programming, we have to keep the pool running, we have to keep all these different things going. Police cars, I had one gentleman mention to me about his argument was, or his point was, we should be reallocating money. Maybe we don't need as many new police cars. You know, all these purchases, all these things that are done are done in an open, transparent format. And I feel very, very comfortable in the nine years that I've been here, that I have never seen council authorize anything that was frivolous. They always put a premium on public safety and investing in public safety. And if that means that we have to have police cars that only have 100,000 miles on them or whatever the mileage or when it gets to the breakdown stage or the fire trucks or when I got here, we were driving a fire truck that was 22 years old. I can't say enough with how frugal and how on target the council, the current council and previous councils have been about making sure fair, measured investments. If anything, there have been times where things have been deferred and they weren't really, they didn't really work out real well for us. But we're in a much better, much better spot now. But as far as the budget goes, there is no reallocation of any resources in our budget that is going to turn around and do any significant renovations or buildings, or definitely not put up any new buildings. We just, the funding is not there. And I mean, you can look at this slide and it gives you an idea of where the money goes and where it's spent.
Yeah. But I think, again, for additional frame of reference too, so $43 million bond that we'd be discussing paid out over 30 years. Our annual city budget is roughly $25 million or so. So just again, to add that perspective that, sure, there might be 100 or 200 grand we can wiggle around in the budget annually or so, but so much of this is right, our fixed costs of our people that work here, our retiree benefits, healthcare, that is a vast, vast majority of all of our expenses come through payroll. And yeah, there really isn't a way to nickel and dime, our way to be able to come up with $43 million any other way possible.
All right. Question number eight. How can a city begin to even estimate the cost of a project of this magnitude without having firm location? We're back to the location thing again, which I get it, people, people are frustrated and everything with it. But we built location, we built the real estate portion into the budgets for the stations. We have readily accessible, available to us, you know, what the estimates are going to be for us to acquire the proper-sized property and to make it, and to make it happen. But it would not be in the public's interest for us to go out and, for instance, be signing contingent purchase agreements prematurely when we don't even know if we have the voter's support. We don't know that, you know, all the ins and outs or whatever. We have, we have to make sure we have the voter's support before we go crazy spending time, effort, and money on something that is only there for us on paper. But I do feel very comfortable with the dollar amounts that are there. Everything was based on building assessment estimates and the square footage costs and what the needs are. And one thing I can promise you, and I, I'll let the mayor speak for the rest of the council, but we won't be coming back asking for more. It won't happen. This is a method to do it, to do it right, once in a generation. I'm not saying it's a pay it forward, but there's no way. But if you do anything less than that, you really can't put the guarantees on it because we don't have, we're not like some cities where we have, you know, millions of dollars in reserve funds or millions of dollars and everything is covered and retiree benefits and all the, you know, we just don't live in that world. We have a very tight margin and this is the only way we can really afford to get us back into where we need to, where we need to be based on all the circumstances.
I think the analogy that I've made to some people too is that, because frankly, yeah, it would be much, much easier if we were able to point to, this is the parcel of property exactly that it would be on. But I've kind of compared it to saying that, you know, it's like knowing you get a new job. job, but you have no idea how much you're going to make, and then deciding you're going to go start looking for new houses. So, I mean, once we kind of have that parameter and understand, you know, what we can afford, things like that, too. I mean, we've got the general vicinity looked at, but, you know, everything is going to be on the table. And, this, you know, passage gives us those parameters for the negotiation piece of it with the land, at least, or proposed plots of land, and knowing what size and specs that we need for that. So, again, we certainly are not trying to hide anything, and it's not that we aren't thinking about it by any means. It would be much easier if we could. But, we, more or less, just need the voters' authority before we can actually start engaging in discussions of property acquisition.
Question nine. If police and fire are the main priorities of the bond, why are other buildings being included in the same bond? Well, I put up there, you know, due to the decrease in revenue since 2008, there's numerous significant projects, building improvements, repairs have been delayed and postponed. But like I've talked about earlier, we have had to make decisions, every year budgetarily, we make decisions about, oh, well, we need a new roof on building, whatever it is. Well, you know, can we get it through one more year, and we'll just do a $10,000 repair? You know, because we don't have endless amounts of funds. And it goes for every building, those decisions and deferments and everything have had to happen. If we did a bond simply for the police and fire station, yes, it would be less money, but we would still be fiscally strapped, and I'm telling you, we would never catch up to all the other needed repairs, and I'll use Westfield. Westfield is, I think, one of the greatest buildings we have in the city. And it serves such a great purpose, takes care of the seniors, they do, there's programming in that building all the time. We have noted about $1.4 million in needed repairs. That building needs work. It's going to be probably more than that, because, and if you read the report, it tells you that there is step-cracking in the walls, there are foundational issues, which council has talked about now, I would guess for the last seven, eight years, or whatever, for sure, about the foundations. We're going to address those. We're going to address those, we're going to get it done, it's going to be done right. And, honestly, for the next 50 years, the seniors are going to have a place, and everybody will have been a senior by that time. They're going to have a place to go and congregate, and it's going to be clean, it's going to be safe, it's going to be ADA compliant, and it's going to be done right. And that's what we need to do across the board with all of our buildings. We have issues here at City Hall. Everybody's, you know, aware of the front steps and different things, whatever, throughout this building that need adjustment. But we've always had to make the most frugal, a lot of times it's been deferments of repairs, where we've had leaks in roofs. I remember when I first got hired, it was raining, and I was meeting with Mayor Stack, and this is, I didn't want to get into storytime, but, on my way in, and then in her office, I encountered five buckets that were catching rain coming through the roof. And I was horrified. I mean, I, Mayor, I go, what is, you have a rain bucket? Yeah, well, it leaks when it rains here. And your first reaction would be, well, what's the matter with council? What's the, listen, the funding wasn't there. It took another year to be able to get the funding, to be able to fix it and fix it right. And it's like that, it's a shell game throughout the city with every single one of our buildings.
And, right, in addition to that, too, that, since, right, the housing market collapsed in '08, so many of those things got delayed, deferred, and, yeah, you summarized it best by saying that there's, the money wasn't there. And that's, you know, tying back to what we're talking about, the levels of service that we pride ourselves on, that our residents deserve. Frankly, those deferments on those big infrastructure investments are the reason that through the market crash and all that, that we were still able to provide that level of service to folks and not have to scale back or charge more fees for things like that. I mean, none of us want to pay more for anything, that's for sure. But, those would have been some realities, and certainly it was before my time on council, but those would have been the things that would have had to have happened. That's what gets us to this point. And so, we've seen over the last couple of years, too, in some of our buildings, our maintenance budgets have tripled in some cases, because, you know, chickens have come home to roost, and that there is no way that they can be deferred any longer. So, it may sound strange or tough to kind of comprehend about it sometimes, but this, in a way, is probably the most cost-effective way that we could go about making these improvements in an expedient manner, and while still continuing to be able to provide services to residents, because that money that we would no longer be spending in maintenance on these buildings can go back into other aspects of the city. You know, what we would be spending on Westfield Center to improve the building, and, you know, just maintain it as what it is, where we've still got, you know, rain buckets and things like that, foundational issues all over the place when the weather gets bad, the, you know, ice pooling up in front of the doors, things like that. The money that we would no longer be spending on maintenance annually can go back into the services that we offer to residents and help enhance those in some ways. So, it could, it's a shell game in a certain way, but it's money that all would be coming back to our residents, for sure.
All right, and then, question number 10. Can we have a detailed breakdown of where the money would be spent? So, if you want to pop the next slide, this gives you a general idea. Now, the new fire station, new police station, those are numbers, and they have the real estate acquisition baked in or built into those, as far as construction costs and everything. Will there be variance? Will there be changes and adjustments and movements? Yes, based on priorities, because since this report was done, and actually even over the last several months, you know, we may have replaced a roof that was noted on a report, or, we may have a new HVAC, not a new, but another HVAC unit that needs to be addressed, needs to be taken care of. But, that breakdown is pretty close to where we would be from an overall budget standpoint out of the 43.5. Visitors to the library, I mean, that front entrance is, take out the front entrance, and that's a beautiful building. You know, the council did it right, I think, 25-years ago, I think it was 25-ish years ago, but the front of the building is, and it's a significant investment for us to get it back to where it needs to be. But, I mean, there's even simple things in there. Parking lot replacement, a parking lot is, especially with the cost of asphalt, is, it's off the charts, it's crazy money. But, we want to make sure that we get those things in place, and I don't believe any of our buildings are 100% ADA compliant, and I'm just running through the buildings. I'm certain there is no building that we have that is 100% ADA compliant. So, we want to make sure we do all that. But that's a basic breakdown. You know, Department of Public Works has, they have the worst location in town, but it's okay, it's underneath the Viadoc that you probably don't even notice when you drive over. But their building is, the bulk of their building is old, bowstring construction, I mean, it's, it needs significant investment to clean it up and to get it right, and so that it'll last, and we can house our trucks inside the building, keep them out of the weather, the trucks will last longer. All these things just kind of snowball, one after the other. The other thing, I just wanted to throw in before the mayor chimes in, too. Listen, nobody, myself included, and I, nobody was jumping for joy that, you know, the numbers worked out to be, you know, the 43.5. We actually, the numbers were actually higher than that, and we worked to make sure we carved out everything that we could, and still keep us on a level playing field and keep the city moving forward, and not reduce it enough so that we would have to come back in five or 10 years, or whatever, and look for additional funds. I think this is a one-and-done, get it done, and it really will be a non-issue going forward. But, the next slide has, just, this is just a break, it's available online, this is based on $100,000 taxable value, and over the 30-years, this is what council decided to go with the 30-years. I had some people ask what the rate and some different things concerning the rate, which I will address. The rate of the bond will be in the 3.5 to 4.5. We budgeted and planned it at 4.5 percent. Is it possible that by the time we issue the bonds, that that number might come down? Yes, but, this isn't like a mortgage, that mortgages are at 7 percent, and so, you know, it's not a windfall of savings, even if we get it from 4.5 down to 4 percent. It's not like, wow, it's really worth waiting for. And the other part of that is, the construction costs are increasing at such a rate that this is not going to get cheaper next year just by simply having our financing rates decrease. Most, any savings that would be there would be canceled out by increase in construction costs, which is just the course of inflation, which is 3.8 or 3.9, or whatever, last time I checked, so. That's all I had, Mayor, so I don't know, what else you want to tag on to?
No, that was all I had on that one, as well.
So, if anybody in the public has questions, it's online. If you don't want to ask it, my email address is there. This will be posted to the website, bottom right-hand side, there's bond information. This will also be, this presentation will be on YouTube, but the presentation itself will be posted by the clerk on the bond site, so it'll be available for you. You want to click through, you feel free to email me, you can call me. It's probably not the easiest way to get ahold of me, but I will get back to you. Generally, I'm able to get back to people in 24-hours. And if you have any other specific questions, you can also direct them towards your elected representatives. You guys have been great about answering people, and when you don't have a particular nugget of information, or whatever, I think the information's been flowing pretty good. And it's, I can't make it any more transparent. You know, listen, it's a tough pill to swallow, but, it's, I'm confident that this is the right direction. Nobody is ever going to be excited about an increase in taxes, but there's tremendous value in what this project is.
And, piggybacking off that, too, I do want to remind folks, I know I mentioned it at the outset, or actually in my remarks during the regular meeting, but for the detailed information that goes really into the nitty-gritty, you know, the 40, 50-slide presentations we had from our fire chief, police chief, and our presentation from Parks and Rec Director as well, those are all available on YouTube and the city's website. I would highly encourage anyone to go watch that. We have a video-recorded walkthroughs, because most of the major, major problem areas are in places that residents wouldn't normally see, that, you know, our police officers and firefighters unfortunately have to deal with every single day, but aren't, you know, the front-facing things at the public eye. So, really want to encourage everyone to do so. And again, if there are still questions after that, you know, obviously, we'll have public comment still this evening, too, after we get council's remarks here. But I just want to reiterate again, if there are questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. That is what we are here for. We want to answer that, those questions as quickly as possible. You know, we could call City Hall at any point. All of our email addresses are posted on the city's website, too. Do not feel, you know, if you don't want to ask it publicly and want to ask it personally, that is totally okay as well. But we want to give everyone the most information that we possibly can. There is, I think we've put a lot out so far, between the Trenton Times, the city's website, the YouTube page, the postcards that have gone out, more information to come, the social media channels and things like that. We want to leave no stone left unturned, make sure folks do get all their questions answered. Just want to, that sometimes, you know, what you might hear in passing is a rumor from a coworker, or see that someone posts on Facebook, is certainly not always true. And we are here to answer your questions, to give you the best information possible. So, please, please, do not hesitate to reach out to us, that is what we are here for. So, before we go to public comment, and I'll open up to council, to see if anyone has any questions, comments, anything like that, Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Dean, did we get any questions in regards to the amount of grants that we try to seek and go after, and questions in regards to matching grants and things like that, that we just cannot afford?
No, no, not directly, but, not through our Q&amp;A app. But, I'm glad you actually bring that up, because I did see a post or two where a person was approaching it with, well, we should get a grant for, we should, and what I can tell you, and I'm preaching to the choir, Dora, because you know this better than anyone, in my 35-years as a firefighter, one time, I believe it was in 2011, the federal government offered fire station build grants, and they awarded 70 in the whole country. Actually, I think it was 2009, because I was still in Dearborn, 2009, and they, anyways, they, so they helped contribute, they didn't completely build 70 fire stations. Since then, and before then, just doesn't happen. There aren't grants available for it. Police stations are really along the same lines. There are ways to get nuggets and, you know, smaller parcels of money, I won't go into, I leave no stone unturned. I'll apply for anything, I don't mind being told no. Been married 39-years, I get told no all the time. No, kidding, she's delightful. But, we apply grant after grant after grant. But, Trenton is, in general, one, there's no grants out there that are going to make this right. It's just, it's too big of a bill. The grants that are out there, almost all of them are for planning, engineering, coming up with ideas. There's very few grants available for shovels in the ground. And the other issue is, Trenton is not yet, no, they're not, we're not economically distressed enough where that money, the money is not directed towards us. That's, I don't care where you land on the political spectrum, it's just the way it is. The most needy, the most broke communities are going to get it way, way before Trenton would get it, even on the smaller grants. You know, I was excited when we got one for the pools, you know, that was a game-changer. It saved our pool, honestly, I think. It definitely took a lot of the barriers out of the way for us. And we, but we are pursuing grants, and those are opportunities to offset and to work through it. But, no, there isn't a magical grant writer that we could employ and come up and fund anything other than small projects, you know, here and there. And even at that, if, even if you come up with a big project, let's say, I wouldn't say a congressional earmark, but, you know, the bigger, like a DOT bill or something like that, where you could get a big allocation, yep, you're going to have to match the allocation, either 50 percent, the lowest is 20. So, it's still millions of dollars of cost, but you can't, you can't apply for a grant that's that big unless you can match it. If you don't have the taxpayer's support to do the matching, you're back at square one. And in our case, once you approve, if the bond would be approved, the meter starts running where you have to expend those funds and you have to go through it. So, it's not like we would be able to turn around and come up with some grant to apply for and wait a year, year and a half for it to be aborted, and then we can put a shovel in the ground, because we wouldn't be able to finish our projects in 36-months. Did I make that too confusing?
Yes, yes. And also, too, I just want to add to that, that for some of the grants, because, you know, I'm constantly looking for grants, every time I see a grant, I throw it at Dean, and he takes a look at it. Every couple of weeks, I'm consistently searching since I've been elected. One of the key things is the population, the city population. been elected. One of the key things is the population, the city population for some of those grants. Some of them look really great. It looks like we would fit the bill. And then once I look at the population, we get knocked out of that category. So, yeah, I just wanted to touch on that. And that's it. Thank you.
It is a great thing though, because you turn on the news and you'll see a city or you'll read in the local paper or whatever, the city got a grant. And it is, it's great to be able to go and promote that and you see the tax dollars coming back to the community. But, you know, the other part of that is for every one grant that is approved along those lines, there's probably 90 that were turned down for any array of reasons. So, but we do press on the grants. Yes, you send them to me regularly. You get the trophy for sending the most grants to me, for sure.
Thank you, Dean.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that you guys have done a great job on this and, you know, dotting the i's and crossing your t's. And I have sat here for almost over 30 years and I've seen the deterioration of these buildings. I grew up here. I know what the residents of Trenton are accustomed to. And it's not what we have. I can tell you that right now. And I really, really think that we won't have another public meeting until after the election. So I think I really wanted to speak up tonight and encourage the residents to support this. Our young families in this town have supported all the school bonds, 38 million, 57 million. That's what's raised your taxes, besides the property values, obviously a little bit for the city. But the actual money that the residents are seeing, because I hear it every day in my shop, and they're seeing, oh my gosh, I got to pay my taxes. My taxes went up $300. Well, yeah, that was great because it was basically a lot of it for the schools. But people move here for our city services. And the schools and the young families are voting for the bonds to see that their kids have the best education. Well, let's see the residents step up and vote for this bond because this is what all the residents need. And this services all of us and our employees who keep the city fabulous on a daily basis. And we have made the tough decisions. We, we went through all this when there was no money. We had to, I remember making decisions when Governor Snyder said, hey, if you don't have cost sharing and you don't do combined services, you're losing 20% of your state's shared revenue. Do people remember that? I mean, there's a lot of this that people don't get. The average resident just tries to feed their family, go to work every day, come home, get dinner and get their kids ready for bed. They don't really know what's going on here on a daily basis. And I just really, really encourage the residents to support this bond issue because this is going to increase your property values. This is going to make more people want to come to Trenton. Shoot, you can't, you can't find a house in Trenton most of the time. I mean, this is the town to live in. And people grow up here and stay here and open businesses here. And so I'm 1,000% supporting this bond. And I, I've talked to a million clients over this. Some are arguing with me constantly. I probably lost clients over this, to be honest with you. But I feel so strong about it that I think we have to step up the plate and really explain to people what the deal is. None of us want to pay more taxes. You know, I pay business taxes here and I pay housing. But it's worth it. It's worth it to be a Trentite.
You know, one of the things you brought up, and I appreciate all the positive and the support and, man, the team of department heads we have have just been outstanding. Working the message, making sure the info is out there, that it's clear, it's, you know, it's phone call after phone call, email after email and engagement after engagement. But it's funny because you're a lifelong Trenton person and you're kind of on the exception end of realizing, most people that I speak to, they moved here for, you know, the good schools and the good city services. And that's the truth. I'm not, it's not just because, you know, it's a good community to live in. Those are the ones that really appreciate when they've lived elsewhere, what goes on here. I mean, it, it, listen, it's, it's, it's first class. Everything is done. It's done well. And if it isn't done the best, we're working really hard to make sure it is the best. I mean, from in-house, in-house trash, police, fire, the recreation department, the library, so many communities do not have a brick and mortar library. You know, we're so blessed, so fortunate. And if you, I talked to a gentleman, a resident, he lived, spent his whole life in Westland and moved to Trenton. And he just had some, you know, genuine questions or whatever. But him relating what he lived with or lived without in Westland compared to what is brought to the table here, the lifelong Trenton people, most of them take it for granted. They don't know any different. Sidewalk replacement, you live in any other community, they come by, they mark your sidewalk that it needs to be replaced, they send you a letter and tell you you've got 30 days to do it or we're doing it for you and you're paying for it. Trenton is the only community around that takes care of that sidewalk. Yeah, you pay a little more in your taxes, but when it's 250 bucks for each square of concrete, it comes around. And that's, that's just a service, people are oblivious. They're, what do you mean? You have to pay for it in other communities. They have no, no idea, no concept. So I appreciate all your comments.
Well, it's just the way, it's the way I feel. And I think us long-time Trentites feel that way. We stay here. We didn't have to. We could leave. Like I said, the housing prices here are unbelievable how much they've gone up because people love this town and this. It's a reason to live here and support our buildings and support this bond.
I appreciate it.
You're here. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Can't stay the best by staying stagnant. So, anyone else from council got anything? All right. We'll open it up for public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak, we'd ask that you begin with your name and address. Please direct all questions through me. And we'd ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. If you're on the Zoom, we'd ask that you use the raise hand feature and we'll get you acued up from there. And then we'll go to any comment in person first and then those on the Zoom.
Hi, my name is Jason Schlegel. I live at 3229 Ward Street. I heard a lot of good stuff here about Trenton. I heard a lot of, there's a lot of good services offered. My wife and I moved here in 2016. Taxes are a little high, but for the service, I do see the service aspect of it because I see the city come through and they'll take trees down. They'll come through the next day and they'll get rid of the stump. You don't see that in other towns. I've never seen a city mark the sidewalk and give you 6, 30 days to remove the cement though, like the city administrator said. But we lived in Brownstown Township and had a bad sidewalk. But my biggest issue with the proposal is, we're looking at all these numbers today and it's 2.79 mils. And I figured my taxable value on my house is around 79,000. So I figure today's dollars, that's 2.30, somewhere around 2.30 a year. Okay. That's today. So next year, when the tax goes up 5%, the taxable value goes up 5%, like it did this, I don't, then it goes up 5%. All that money that is collected in the new dollars next year, I think that's where everybody's having a big issue with it. Because I talked with a couple of people online, I think Emily. And we're really kind of wondering, every year when our taxes go up to 5%, this is going to earn more money toward that bond that we have to pay back. Do we pay back sooner because of that? Or is this, is this just a straight line payment? I paid 2.21 this year. Does it go up to 5% like the state mandated increases?
So I'll let you tag in, Dean, if I screw this up a little too. But just in short, the one thing I will say is, I think this past year was the first time I think that we've ever seen 5% here. Generally, it's been around one, between one and two or so. It's just obviously inflation was so much higher this year. But yeah, Dean, if you want to add into this for the credit, crediting portion?
Yeah. So in the bottom, in the bottom right-hand on the, on the front of the website, if you, if you click on there and you go into the documents, there, there is a document that shows what the anticipated mill effect is in it.
I know there was a couple of other issues that I, questions I had about it, but I'm failing to remember them because it's such a long presentation. And I didn't bring a notepad to write anything down. But, um,
Just blame the guy behind you.
But no, we love Trenton. I mean, we've, we did, we came here because my wife wanted her son to go to the schools. So, I mean, we, we don't understand why it came to this where all these buildings deteriorated and nothing got done. And when they build these new buildings, is there a plan in place to maintain them? Because apparently, it looks like there wasn't a plan in place to maintain these buildings. Because as a rental, you own rentals, you, you actually add in costs of replacing the roof or the furnace or anything that's going to be detrimental to making revenue. So.
For sure. No, and I understand that I don't want to necessarily, this is annoying. I don't want to, you know, admonish previous people that were here before me and all too and like, and obviously there were tougher decisions to make. But I will certainly, okay. I will certainly say that that is something that we have changed drastically the last couple of years in terms of capital investments and setting aside money in each of our departmental budgets. Dean actually started doing that for us when he was fire chief in the fire department and that, you know, we're socking away 50, 100 grand for each department every year to know that we're not going to have to spend $400,000 out of pocket on a piece of equipment or something out of the gate. So yeah, there would certainly, certainly be a plan in place because I certainly have my word, as long as I'm here, I do not want to be asking residents for more money for anything at this rate. This is the one-time rip the Band-Aid off because now this is, it's a lot of money. We certainly respect that. We would all have to pay it too if it passes. And we've, we've got to take care of our stuff the same way that we expect residents to take care of our property for that matter.
Right. Well, with the state of the inflation that we've been dealing with over the last couple of years, I mean, this is a big, tough pill to swallow for anybody. And I think in a better climate, it would be easier to handle. But I talked to a lot of seniors in the city. And I stopped and talked to a lot of them because of my job and I work. But, and it's tough for them. I mean, I'm not, I'm going to be fine. It's, you know, $200 a year, that's nothing to me. But to somebody that's on a fixed income, that's good, that's a lot of money.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate the time. And I know I have more questions, so I'll hit the, I think there's not, is there going to be any more study sessions? This the last one?
This is the last one before the vote, actually. But I mean, feel free to call City Hall, come up here anytime. And our emails are on there too. If you ever have any of those, we'd certainly be happy to get any information to you for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. We appreciate that. All right. Any other public comment? Let's see if there's any hands on the Zoom. Not seeing any. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment at 8:41 PM. Just one last reminder to folks too, if anyone has any questions that weren't answered tonight or can't be answered online or online or need anything else at all, please, please, please do not hesitate to contact us. We are more than happy to talk about it. So have a good evening, everyone, and see you all in a couple of weeks.